I'd like to call the meeting to order. We can say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Trey, thank you for coming. We have no visitors wishing to speak and no written communication. Jump right into Boarding Committee reports. ECASB legislators.
We may have a bunch of new people in the running as big as new discussion about the calendar. Probably the two most interesting items, the open roundtable session, the discussion of the foundation, where these whole plans going to go, and then what I'll call the consequences of the CBA. So we're not going to issue it. This is perfect.
Okay. Policy.
We had a policy change yesterday, and one secret policy is on the next. We have eight policies that we discussed. They were all in this case, and the changes were mainly for this year.
Great. And then Capital Project Committee. We had that yesterday. We did a Zoom call. Mrs. Wazinski held. There had been seventeen or eighteen people on the call between all the building principals, apartment heads, and what have you. They included also Dominic, Mark, and myself. And they had Rick Gancy on going over our debt service, when things are going to fall off. When, correct me on the terminology, what is it with each building, the cost?
The maximum cost allowance.
Maximum cost allowance. So how much we can actually do per building changes, depending on when you start the project or get your permits, it changes how much you can do per building. So we heard all of that. We saw a timeline of if we want to go out to vote, late 2022, of when, what has to happen and when. We did do a kind of, we're going to proceed forward in kind of identifying things to do while we're still waiting for the building condition survey to be completed, which that should be done probably the end of April, correct?
Yep.
So we don't miss anything that we need to go out to public with. You know, and they gave certain, you know, what it would look like in terms of if you did a twenty million, thirty million, fifty million, whatever type project, and how the debt service would be right now. We talked about, and how all of that is affected by a capital reserve. So there was discussion about, you know, trying to maybe build a capital reserve. You don't need to have all this money in the reserve all at the time of the vote. You can, you know, we're going to have it in there and have a plan to put the money in the reserve before you go out to bond. Am I correct in that?
If the future monies become available, they can be allocated towards the project.
That's what was discussed. There's going to be further meetings, I think, to dive down into building level meetings as to what the buildings need, both needs, wants, educational issues, what have you, and try to develop this part. Did I miss anything?
I would say December is the first building based meeting.
Anything else? All right, we'll be right in the super country.
Great, thank you. Tonight we get the opportunity to honor our Students Teacher of the Month for September and October through a virtual presentation from Mr. Pigeon. He asked to continue virtual presentations for the time being, just in the interest of social distancing as well as, you know, being able to honor all of the kids who sometimes aren't able to attend because of their, and the teachers, because of their busy schedules outside of school. Not sure we'll be entertained by Mr. Pigeon.
Well, thank you as always to our Board of Education, Superintendent Mellett, for this opportunity to shine a spotlight on the greatness at Amherst Central High School, our Student of the Month, Teacher of the Month program. Mr. Gregory Pigeon, Principal, reporting in for newbie, and I'm pleased to present to you our wonderful students and staff. For September first of the eighth, Nick Moore. Nick was nominated for many reasons. Mr. Job will share that he's just doing a great job in business class this year, stepping up in class as a leader, asking for help when he needs it, and really persisting to challenge and challenge of course, so great job there. Mr. Geisen also shared his leadership in terms of Nick is the first to step up in class when he's introducing a new exercise in strength and conditioning class. So no shortage of leadership in that class as well, as well as Coach Kenzie shared that Nick is just in classic, in the classroom, on the court, leaders. Congratulations to you, Nick Moore. Perry Simpler was nominated by, of all people, her brother, so that's a strong testimony. He shared that she works insanely hard and is the better person in Illinois than he is this summer together, brother and sister. They balance friends, their jobs, internship, and they even attended a marine biology conference and were offered to be the hosts. They passed the conference and was allowed to visit even though the experience had challenged it. She made the best of it and the most of it and helped him improve. She works hard every day to make sure everything is done, and projects to her are done weeks and months in advance. She single-handedly helped carry their AP US history classroom last year, getting assignments done and passing their tests, and really looks forward to her shepherding AP government this year. A wonderful person all around and just a charismatic and charming individual. So thank you from your brother. That is great, great testimony. So congratulations to you. Mr. Wizbiniak was nominated by one of his students, X and Rogers, and she shared that that she's a trailblazer and wanted to nominate Mr. Wizbiniak. He really helped make the transition from high school, from middle school to high school a little less scary every time that she's in his class. He always checks on the students, really engages with students in class, sees how they're doing, gives them pointers, lots of praise and compliments. Of course, with some of the protocols we have this year, Mr. W, Mr. Wizbiniak, always greets the students at the door, and you can tell he's smiling behind his mask, very positive and gets involved with the students. When my friend asked if we could play tennis in gym, he told us that he would like to play tennis and actually got a tennis racket, and was playing right along with us. And he even wasn't afraid to win, apparently. So congratulations to you, Mr. Wizbiniak. When he was announcing the JV football game, one of the players asked him to announce his name right there, game, and he spoke it perfectly. So that's testament to Mr. Wizbiniak, always taking that extra effort to have a positive impact on students. So congratulations to you, Mr. Wizbiniak. Ms. Simpson was nominated. Ms. Simpson is one of our teacher assistant aides in the building, and I could say from my own personal experience, which is often outside of my doorway at the front desk, there's not a more caring individual in this school district, and I can say that with confidence. She is warm and caring and is really a mom to many, many students in this building. She was a big part of many of our operations last year, making phone calls, really making those personal connections with students, and especially those students that are feeling a little challenged, whatever their challenge is. She really extends a warm and gracious touch with all of her students and really seeks them out, to provide them with just friendly face every day, a caring posture, and goes the extra distance. And that caring really genuinely exudes from her heart, and kids recognize that immediately. So she is the popular person around this building and really well-liked by everybody because it's apparent how much she truly cares about our family and students, and we are just thrilled to recognize her in September. Congratulations, Ms. Simpson. Moving on to October, Hannah Abelneck is a really, really top, top-notch student. She really excels in all our classes. She's active in so many things at Amherst and is in the top three of her graduate, or not graduate yet, but in the top three of the senior class, always kind of, always involved, whether it's in the classroom, outside the classroom. One thing that we didn't know last year and will recognize again, the mental health awareness committee that is very, very much student-owned and operated. It has a lot to do with her leadership, and she's carrying that torch forward this year. They've been meeting regularly, so we're looking forward to great things to support our students from that student-driven committee. So for all those efforts and everything you do, Hannah, congratulations to you. Jackson Kelly is another one of the bright lights at Amherst. Jackson is a very good student, extremely positive individual in class. All of his teachers noted how positive he is and helpful in class and a leader in class. And Jackson, I know personally, is a leader outside of the class, especially down in that music wing. I always see Jackson down there helping out, carrying the chairs, helping every teacher down that wing, set up good things down in the pub, et cetera. He's involved in everything down in the music wing, and his involvement is really under the column of whatever he can here to help. So for all of those efforts, Jackson, we congratulate you as Student of the Month for October. Teacher of the Month, rookie, Ms. Yvette Mercado. A father is a card collecting, Amherst teacher, card collector, and this rookie card is one out of the key because it's going to be very, very valuable in the future. Yvette was, Mr. Mercado, I should say, was recognized by one of her students immediately as someone that's really making a difference for him in his senior year, saying that she's made this senior year so much better this year so far. We've got a ways to go. Really caring individual, has done a great job of what we call Room 200, our academic source program, which is really a nest for many, many students that he supports. And Ms. Mercado is there. Ms. Piper had shared, was her partner in that classroom, who was in possession of the program prior to Ms. Mercado, has just shared how great a job she's doing connecting with students, such a great command of the content, and really does a great job. So congratulations to you, Ms. Mercado, your second month at Amherst being recognized as Teacher of the Month. And in contrast, one of our veteran teachers, Mr. Mansell, was nominated for, nominated for October. Mr. Mansell was nominated by Mr. Bauer and was recommended for a number of reasons, really being there for his students this fall, especially for juniors that are on the rise and really kind of getting back into the swing, getting that rigor back, academic fire being raised a little bit this year, and Mr. Mansell will be to help them over that bar. Chemistry is not the easiest course, and often, often see Mr. Mansell in all different places in this building, two-on-one, three-on-one with students, and the topic is chemistry. He's an extra help specialist. He's there early in the mornings, gets his own workout in, and then he's working on chemistry style with Amherst targets in the cafeteria after school, et cetera. He's always there, and he kind of models that sometimes with certain forces or with certain things at school, it requires a little extra help outside the classroom, and he's always there for that, as well as really, really getting to know his students. He takes personal interest in their interests, and that shows. He works intentionally to really bring an optimistic and positive environment to Amherst, and he's been a bright light at Amherst for many, many years. That's a true old Mr. Mansell, but you are one of our young veterans, I'll put it that way. So I will say thank you to all of these individuals, whether it's our teachers and our students. They really, really bring great panache to the table and show and model what Amherst is all about, which is tradition, pride, and achievement. So I thank you for your kind attention this evening, and I look forward to a wonderful school year as well as many, many more of these presentations this year. Have a great rest of the year.
It's always great to hear about the bunch of things going on, and there will be a time when we can meet these folks in person again and honor them, you know, face-to-face. I look forward to that. Not the official kickoff for budget season, but close. Kind of a wrap-up of last year. Mrs. Wazinski is here to report out on our long-range fund balance and reserve plan, which as we go, kind of flushes out throughout the summer and in the fall with our finance and financial year closing out, our annual audit. We'll have the opportunity at our next full meeting to take a look at projections for next year's budget when we officially kick off budget season next month. Welcome.
Thank you. As Superintendent Mellett stated, this is kind of our first look at budget where we landed last year, and this document is a living document. It's words, thoughts, and opinions on our existing reserves and our plans to lose reserves. So any decisions that are made or that any information that we put in this document can be changed throughout the year as the plans move. So tonight we'll just review the reserves that we had in place, where we landed at the end of the past two years, so June 30th, and then talk a little bit about what the changes were and what we want to be moving forward. So the first one we'll look at is our reserve for retirement contributions, and this is for our ERS contributions, our employee retirement system. The recommendation is to have two years' worth of our payments. For us, it would be about 1.6 million, and our current balance is just over one million. So if we wanted to be fully funded to our recommendation, we would need to increase the $640,000. The benefit of having this reserve is that in and here that our ERS rate might jump. This is an opportunity for us to kind of level that jump a little bit so that we can appropriate some of this during weather development and income for revenue, kind of offset our projected increases in that area. The second one is the reserve for retirement contribution sub-fund. So this is specific to TRS payments, which are our teacher salary or administrator salary payments. This reserve has only been authorized for the past four years. This is actually the fourth year. Before, we were only allowed to have a reserve for ERS payments. And again, the benefit of having this reserve is in a year where we can see a jump in our percentage rate, we can use this to help level that increase in expenditure a little bit so that it's not all hitting us at once. So the specifics of this reserve, we can put up to 2% of prior year salaries in each year, up to a maximum of 10%. So we're only in year four. We funded it three, two years in a row. We did not fund it this year. So our balance is 964,000, and as of this year, we would be able to, and this year we know we have just under 1.4 million, getting funded in again with another 2%. We did receive some preliminary information on what our TRS rates are going to look like for next year. Currently, they're budgeted at 9.8%, and the projections for next year are anywhere from 10% to 15%. So when we have our first look at budget development next month, we will be anticipating a 10.5% increase just to be on the same side, hoping that when the rate is finalized and gets updated information in March, it will come down a little bit up to 10% or 10.5% versus us budgeting 10% and then we can increase it at the last minute. Reserve for employee benefit and crew liability. This is a reserve that matches our approved liability for compensated excesses. So that's one of our audit requirements. We calculate the approved benefits that all of our staff have that we would have to pay out in the event that that person left. So it's our approved vacation time, retirement benefits that are existing based on our contracts. So for us, that amount is just over $3 million if we were, that's our liability, but our actual balance is 857,000. So this is a reserve that we have used the last couple of years to help support our budget. We do have to spend a few months to help pay the bill payments for our retirees. If we wanted to be fully funded in this area, it would be just over a $2 million increase. Now, the likelihood that everyone in this year is going to need it once and one this year is obviously not very likely, but that is the viability that we've reported in our audit this year.
Mr. Wazinski, so the numbers, just as we're going along here, for 63021, those would include all the reserve balances as adjusted post-audit?
Yes. Reserve for unemployment insurance is just that. We are self-funded in our insurance and our unemployment claims, so we pay actual claims. During COVID, we had some very incredible claims, which we did not pay. Our current balance in our unemployment reserve is 460,000. In prior years, we have recommended that this be decreased because our unemployment payments are usually between $5,000 and $10,000 a year. We have done very well with retaining our employees or if employees are leaving because they have a different job or because they're retiring, not because we're currently in the block, which is a hundred percent. Unfortunately, during COVID, there were significant problems leading on the unemployment system, and in the final quarter of the 1920 year, which is where COVID really hit us, we received a bill of $330,000. So we did not pay that, but we continued to receive fraudulent claims throughout the entire next year. We got a second bill for $320,000. New York City is no longer asking us to pay that, and we didn't. But until that settles out and we really know what our true claims are going to be for the past eighteen months to two years, at this point, we're recommending we not decrease that until we know where there's going to land until out. Typically, we want to have up to 10 years' worth, which would be about 200,000, so potentially there could be some excess funds in there, but until we know, until we think so settled for COVID, at this point, I think we'd like to leave that alone. Our reserve for tax surtrary is based on claims that homeowners or property owners make when they feel that their assessments are too high or they're being overtaxed on their property values. Over the last few years, we've had some large claims that have settled favorably to the district, so we no longer need that full amount there. So we have about $463,000 in our reserve, and as of this fall, our 100% liability, if all of the current claims went against us, our cost would be about $114,000. So there is some room there if we choose to reuse that. It'd be about $349,000 that we could reuse out of there. This reserve in particular does have specific requirements that once the monies are no longer needed for liabilities, that those funds are returned to general fund. When we decide that we are ready to do that, we will consult with our attorneys to make sure that they have the proper language and resolutions in place to renew it in accordance with the law that's governing the reserves. We have two capital reserves that are established. One was a smaller reserve of $500,000 maximum from 2017. This was approved by the voters, and to date, we have funded it with $300,000. So the balance is just over 302,000. So that reserve has room for 200,000 in there. We can fund up to the maximum amount, and the interest can be on top of that.
Mr. Wazinski, with those reserves, correct me if I'm wrong, but we cannot, they're not fluid like the other ones where we can move things around, right? Once the money goes in, it's in.
Right.
We don't have the ability to take it out for anything other than capital reserve.
Yes, and if for whatever reason it wasn't going to be used for a capital project, we knew we were never going to do one, it needs to be used to pay down existing debt. So it has to be for a capital reserve. And that's based on the resolution that we put before the voters when they authorized the establishing of the reserve. The second reserve was established just this past May, the 2021 capital reserve. It's a $10,000, $10 million limit with 10 years. We have not funded that at all yet, and on this one, our recommendation is to put in it, if we want to fund it at all, as much as would be needed to bring our unappropriated fund balance back into compliance at the board's time. We'll talk about our unappropriated fund balance in a moment. So these are all of our reserves. We have one that we've identified, potentially two eventually that we were funded. All of the other reserves that move for them, if the board chooses to fund them additionally. So the other areas that we want to talk about are fund balance and our debt service fund. So unassigned fund balance or unappropriated fund balance are the funds that are subject to the 4% rule, meaning at the end of the year, we can't have more than 4% of next year's budget. So during COVID, we had discussions and the board made the decision to exceed the 4% because we knew we were going to have company purchases for COVID, and we anticipated having revenue shortfalls in the state aid, which we did. So in last year, we were at 8.77%. We've had it all in unappropriated fund balance, and then we knew we were going to use some of it, and we used just over a million dollars this year. So we didn't overspend our budget, but we did see revenue shortfalls, which caused us to need to use some of that, which was exactly the plan and the purpose when we built the budget. So we did show a significant decrease in our unappropriated fund balance, and we reduced to the 4%, actually a 6.6%. So that's where we, that's where the decrease of the million dollars is reflected. For next year, if we want to be compliant at 4%, we would need to be down to 2.6 million, and that's assuming next year's budget is an increase of 3%. Obviously, we don't know that yet, so these are all estimates. So it would be about $1.6 million that we would need to have either used during this current year or exchange certain consumer reserves. Our assigned fund balance is again funds that the district has available, but that we have promised to the current year budget. So our actual balance is 1.5 million, and that's comprised of the commerences and our appropriation in our budget. If you remember, we used 806,000 in fund balance to balance our budget, which matched our contingency line in our budget. And then the 700,000 are purchase orders that we had in place at the end of the year that for whatever reason, we couldn't close the page before we closed our bills. So it could have been a service that we had signed a contract with that wasn't completed during the end of year, materials that we purchased that hadn't been delivered yet. So those funds roll over into the current year and increases this year's budget, and then we make those payments, and then that wipes out for the end of this upcoming year. And then our debt service fund. So these are funds that are a result of premiums that we received from past borrowings. We have about 238,000 in there, and that will be used to support a future year budget. And and that will be used to support a future year budget, and it is part of the calculation of our debt stack. So so far, it's just been sitting there in growing interest. We haven't used it yet, but that's something that we can do to help balance future budgets. So that's all of our fund balances, our debt service fund, and all of our reserves. At this time, we can talk about any of them. If there are specific questions, comments, or thoughts anybody has, we can talk about what we might want to do with them moving forward if it's something different than what's reflected here. And this is also a time that we might want to think about having a community work and how we might want to plan to bond some of those reserves if we're going to move forward with a project, how much of those funds we want to have in the reserves before we go to the voters. The decisions don't need to be made today, but we can edit this document for later in the year. This is just kind of a guide for us in some of our situations.
I think for me, I'd like to see how the three-year budget forecast has been a change with the potential new monies, you know, with this state aid, you know, how Asian aid changing for us, because that, you know, could change. Maybe we do have a lot more money to throw in these capital reserves, which aren't as fluid, but would help with a future capital project and really offset the local share, so.
And speaking with Superintendent Penelope, we have started talking about what our budget development is going to look like this year. We always do a three-year look ahead, but we're often using very static percentages for years to come. This year, we're going to, it's going to look a little different because we're going to dive into those a little more. We're going to look at those state aid monies for foundation aids that might be coming in. And we're also going to be bringing, picking into the positions that we have in our current stimulus grants. And if you remember from our stimulus conversation, we had several positions that rolled into the grant this year, and little by little, we want to start rolling those in the general fund. So we're going to incorporate some of that into budget development for our December presentation so that we can kind of look at that now and make sure that we're planning for that accordingly, especially knowing, you know, if those large foundation aid increases come in, which is what we're hoping for, it'll help offset some of the positions we had in the stimulus funds that we want to roll back in the general fund and make.
Yeah, I mean, we typically budget with 98%, 99% accuracy, which is great because we're trying to figure out, you know, in May, what's going to happen a year later. There's so many factors and variables and things that could happen that are unforeseen. But with 98% accuracy in our budgeting, that still means that there's the potential for $600,000 to $1.2 million at the end of the year to fund some of our reserves. So the opportunity to throw that reserve is, I think, there. I would say the other thing, you know, I was pleasantly surprised when Rick Gancy reported to the committee that our aid ratio for capital construction has increased. So it was previously 74%, and it's now 78.4%. So that means, you know, for whatever project we do, our local share is 32% or, I'm sorry, 22%, you know, the cost of it. So, you know, that's a significant opportunity for us to take advantage of in terms of approving our facilities as well as maintaining our buildings so that they are welcoming for our students and staff for years to come. You know, typically, we have a conversation in June around our projections of fund balance and reserves, and we talk to you about doing some resolutions to authorize us to move the money over the summer months as things are shaking out. So I anticipate we would come back to this plan at that time. We're also monitoring very closely our budget because, as you know, we already incurred some unplanned or unforeseen expenses in the current school year. So there are a lot of variables we're considering at this point. So I think our best bet would be to come back to this in June once we have a clearer picture of how the current year is playing out.
Is there any reason we could do all of this signing together?
All of the, all of the, all of the.
Or the actual.
I just didn't, when we were developing this, we made our recommendations. The board's argument. But yes, there is plenty of room in almost all of the reserves. I don't think it would be a problem to find that 4% at the end of this year. And last year, this year, not being compliant, very difficult. I think that it meant a lot when we anticipated would happen with our revenue shortfall. That's exactly what those funds are for, to help cover you for real instances like that. We didn't catch a company, we didn't cut staff, we didn't, we didn't take things, we didn't, we didn't. Bought furniture and you bought whatever it was you did to keep everybody safe, and that's what, that's what that's for. So hopefully, getting through that enough, the stimulus packages that came through that year weren't available or even thought of at the beginning when we originally decided to exceed that 4%. Things are a little more difficult now, and we're looking at very reasonable to still be compliant with that. Prepare this report on what reserve we put in there.
Thank you. Very comprehensive report and a nice update for us. And as I mentioned, I expect us to be revisiting this document as we get closer to year end. Thank you.
Are we good to put this on the agenda for adoption next week as is? Because it is in direct form right now, so it doesn't need to be adopted by the board. That doesn't mean that it can be changed in the future.
So we're just adopting the recommendation. We're not necessarily saying that that's all the big parts we're going to stick to the correct.
Oh, yeah. It's, that's a good-looking plan for right now, and so it's not really edited.
Busy desktop, yes. We do have, we have our network files. We're just, so, thank you very much for that report. And I can turn it back over for new business.
Great. We will need a motion for new business items.
Make a motion for new business items, E1, A through G, 2, A through E, 3, B, E, F, and H.
Do a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just have one question. How long was Annette Rooney, she's retired? How long was she with the baseball?
I have to look back a long time.
Yeah, it's unusual for a TA to have been there for a long time.
Yeah, I need for a call because I just got off the phone, but yeah, she's been through the process. I have to say somewhere, I myself, like, 30 years, I have to back it up. The exact number, but it took us a while.
And, thank you.
All those in favor of approving new business items, E1, A through G, 2, A through E, and 3, B, E, F, and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Mrs. Wazinski, do we have any follow-up actions? Then we will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to meet the executive session regarding the funding of the first item.
Do a second. All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Patrick.